All right, welcome everyone to the first in a long time joint city council and San Rosa City School Board meeting. Madam City Clerk, could you do a roll call for the city council, please?
Certainly. Let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Combs and Councilmember Sawyer. Additionally, please let the record show that all members of the school board are present with the exception of Director De La Cruz and Director Medina.
Thank you, Clerk. And since it is a joint meeting with the school board, we're going to have to start our meeting like we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you can all join us for this, it'll be a new experience for you.
Right, bringing them back.
That's right.
Back to school.
[Inaudible]
Hopefully, I remembered the words to that one.
Sounded good from here. Do we have any cards? So, seeing no cards. One thing that we also wanted to add, I was going to ask Chair Close if you want to make some comments about the collaboration about this meeting and invite any of their, we'll first go through the school board members and then council members if you wanted to make any comments about this first in a long time joint school board city council meeting. So would you like to go first?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the mayor and the city for making this happen. We've been trying to make this happen for a long time. It's been a really long time, I think maybe a decade since this happened regularly, but prior to that, it was a regular thing. And I think it's a good idea for the school board and for the city to be talking regularly on things on which we can collaborate. One thing that I learned since Mayor Schwedhelm and I scheduled this is that the city of Cloverdale actually on a regular basis has an ad hoc from their school board and city council that meets so that they can work offline and then they just have meetings when necessary together. But that seems like a good idea. But in any case, I'm glad we're doing this and want to thank Mayor Schwedhelm for making it happen. And anybody else comments just about being here today? All right.
Thank you. So from the council perspective or my perspective, one thing that I did have a wonderful opportunity to participate in with Jen was she and I did our first traveling town hall meeting at Piner High School. And we had about 100, 120 kids there. And it was a great opportunity where we really had no agenda. I was able to share with the students this is what the council tier one priorities were. Yes, Mr. McGlynn, with the due dates and everything. And it was a great opportunity just to get the feedback from the students there. Is this what your priorities would be? And for the most part, we were like, I don't want to say spot on, but they seemed very appreciative that, you know, climate action was there and had a lot of questions regarding homelessness. So we're hoping to continue these type of dialogues throughout the district for any other campuses. I think we have one coming up in a couple of weeks at Ridgeway.
We're going to Ridgeway, yep.
So it's just nice. And I think the more we do these, the more we'll see the benefits we can get from these type of partnerships. So I'll offer to other council members, any comments, opening comments you'd like to make? Seeing none. Then let's roll into the staff briefings. Mr. Magl... Superintendent Kimore, would you like to?
Superintendent.
Yes, good afternoon. And it's very nice to say good afternoon instead of good evening. Thank you for, from me too as well, this joint venture because the more I'm in this position, the more I see how much overlap there is. And one of the, one of the most wonderful ones that I love working with, and that's the Santa Rosa Police Department. And so we wanted to highlight tonight the wonderful partnerships we have between the city schools and the police department, specifically the SROs, but also some other programs as well. And so I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Steve Mizera and Lieutenant Janine Cooker.
Hi, my name's Steve Mizera. I work in what's called Student and Family Services. So for us, that's around attendance, student discipline, special education and those pieces. And I've had the pleasure for the last three years to be coordinating with the SRO program. I work hand in hand with the SROs every year and lieutenants, sergeants as they come through. And we've developed, I think, a pretty strong bond. So we're going to talk about some of the things that we've, we do. The historical precedent for this goes back to the original Drug Suppression Grant from 1996. That was supposed to help coordinate city services, provide logistics for secondary schools around drug education, intervention and enforcement. After that, after that grant expired, the SRPD was able to keep positions in place and expand and became an SRO at every high school, which feeds to its middle school feeder, so a high school and a feeder middle school. And that's kind of how the program begins. And we've moved on and added Measure O, that we talk about a violence prevention partnership. That partnership is very strong in the city schools. We have meetings with the Santa Rosa Police, probation and others, and with our assistant principals at school sites. And we talk about what's going on in the community, what to look for, those kind of issues. And we have a nice sharing of information that we've had for many, many years.
From, sorry, from the police standpoint, we'll let Sergeant, Lieutenant Cooker explain.
Sorry. And I'm Janine Cooker, Lieutenant with the Santa Rosa Police Department. And I'm also doubling as the sergeant for the SR program and the lieutenant in charge of the program as well. Happy to be here today. From our perspective, we have school resource officers on each of our high schools, basically keeping the campus safe. Just having a presence on campus, I think, does a lot for the high schools. It helps the officers on each campus to develop relationships and just be present for kids to be able to talk to and answer questions for them and just be there for the teachers and staff as well. On each campus, the SROs take place or take part in doing presentations periodically on gang intervention, drug awareness, how to stay safe in general. We, one of our SROs does a cyber bullying presentation quite often. And actually, all of the SROs are starting to also do that presentation. And just helping kids make good decisions through just, again, being present to answer questions, guide, provide guidance and mentoring. From our perspective as well, it's a great way to engage with the community and engage with the teenagers at each of the campuses and the middle schools. And speaking of which, we have a youth community, youth police experience where kids are, we take applications from kids from all of the schools, high schools in Santa Rosa, and we put them through a week-long, basically it's a kind of an academy or course where we teach them about what it's like to be in police work and encourage them to potentially become police officers at some point. And really just developing those relationships with the students. We also participate in mentoring and just being role models in schools. It's not part of Santa Rosa City Schools, but myself and another SRO are formal mentors for two kids at RCP and RUP in the Roseland District. We also spend a lot of time lately on educating and training staff on critical incidents on campus. And this would be our active shooter training that we provide for staff and teachers on each campus. We've actually done several, probably within the last three months, we've done at least 20 presentations on several schools in Santa Rosa. And we do walkthroughs and safety assessments for those schools as well.
And so that highlights the need, from what we at schools feel that we need out of our partnerships, and that's expertise. Obviously, they have the expertise of what has to happen in a situation that's not necessarily an educational event. That they bring confidence, that partnership brings confidence to us to understand that we are feeling that we are a priority. We know we have services that we can count on. The focus is great for us too, because we also try to reach and educate our community. We've shared presentations together at parent nights on drug and alcohol, as you mentioned, vaping, those kind of things. And so this SROs provide a critical focal point for our community as well. And that just goes to show some of that purpose. Another important point is accessing city and county services. In these times where we're reducing county, county reductions, I'll have a slide on that in a minute. But having the SROs to be able to tell us who to go to information, whether it's probation, whether it's a social situation, social workers or those things, they have a greater broad outlook on what works in the community. And so for many times when we're working with a situation, they're very helpful for us to give us access and tell us who to go in the community. So what that does is, an example, she already, Lieutenant already mentioned, the supports we have and the drills. So let me bring one point of information. We had a coordinated city drill last year with Piner High School, the coordinated between the SRPD, fire, EMTs as well. And so, so that's an example of, they needed a location to practice these kind of things. They were very proactive in coming towards us. There, there had been times where having those drills on our campus would cause alarm in our community. And that's not the factor anymore. In fact, there were times when I have principals in this district at this, at our schools who were concerned about a police car being parked in front of their school, thinking, oh, people are going to think that's a problem. I have to tell you, that's completely reversed now, that they like to see that there. That's a confidence that comes to the neighborhood where it was viewed as a negative factor. And I think that kind of right there in a nutshell talks about the improvements we have in the partnership. The other piece I do want to note here is that county offices, county office has reduced health services to schools. There's a strong program. It's called CAPE. It was about mental access and prevention to schools. That's been reduced in the last round of budget cuts. And so right now, from a school standpoint, we need the police officers more than ever because they have access to the mobile service team. They still have a way for us to address students' mental needs and health under whether or not the child needs 5150 analysis. And we don't have that availability like we did with the county anymore. And so police partnership is even more important than others. Let's see if I can get your grid. Hold on a second. So what the grid is showing is the examples of, it's not showing the presentation. Forgive me. So what Lieutenant was talking about is we have a grid where we've had schools show the time of access that they've done for training for staff participation. So this is, this is an example of the partnership where they'll come in and discuss with administration what it looks like under active shooters, what you should be working on. They've come to school sites and shown us, they've walked to the campus with us to talk about vulnerabilities and things we can work on. They've trained staff at the actual school and perhaps some have had discussions about student safety. So this is just a logistic thing where we do to really recognize the importance and what they've done to come out to schools. Another important piece of the partnership that we've done is around truancy. So truancy in, from a standpoint of a police is students that are not at school, that could be in the neighborhood. It's obviously a community issue that we want to make sure students are at school because of other vandalism and crimes and things that could be going on in the neighborhood. Now, that was the old model of what truancy was about. And what has come for us is, it's become for us a vital sign of why students aren't attending school. Is it because of these other reasons that they're involved in other outside activities? Or is it because of other social, emotional welfare things? So for us, it's an important piece where we've received a grant from the state of California Department of Education called a sale grant, where we focus on chronic absenteeism. So where truancy used to be, someone's not coming to school and they've ditched and they've gone to the mall or something or the skate park. Now, what we're looking at is chronic absenteeism for kids that miss for whatever reasons, parent vacations, I'm too sick, I feel nervous and I'm too anxious to come to school. That for us is more of a symptom of something we have to work on with that family. And that's where the city and county resources come in. SROs become a vital component of that. Many of them sit on what's called a student attendance review team, like at a school site, when we're having attendance problems. They'll meet, they may know families, they may talk at that point. We have one of the SROs that attends what's called a student attendance review board at the district level. We have a student, an SRO who works there and looks for services that are available to families that we may not be aware of. So those are another good example of the partnership that really helps us in schools. A quick, our own, some statistics we've done over the last couple of years. So T1 is called a truancy letter, first truancy, second truancy letter. SART is the team that I discussed at school site, and SARV is the district. And you can see over the last couple of years, we've really ratcheted up what we're working with. Now, these are county services. This is obviously DA referrals to juvenile court, but just shows an example of the emphasis that the SROs have helped us with. And then we can't forget one of the strong partnerships that's very important for both teams is that every 15 minutes, every 15 minutes is a great way for us to work with our partner to talk about the importance of being drug free on school. The timing of those events are very strong around prom and the spring and dates when, when there's a lot of outside events going on, a lot of pressures for teens to be drinking and driving. And that has been a very strong anti-drug message for many, many years. And one of the strengths of it is the relationship that comes together. And maybe Lieutenant can speak just what that looks like and the importance of that.
So the, the SROs, we actually get an abundance of applications for this program for the kids to participate. And they have to go through all of the applications and then come up with, I believe it's approximately 20 kids that go through the program. They get to go to an overnight retreat with the officers and talk about their experiences through the program. It's very emotional. I know that the chief and I were both there last year at Piner High where it was held. And it's just an extremely impactful program, I believe, for the kids and how just involved they are emotionally in the process of going through the program. And they just, they develop really strong bonds, I think, with the SROs and with each other going through that program. So it's just, we have it at Santa Rosa High next, this coming year. It takes about nine months for the SROs to actually plan from start to finish. So it's a very involved program.
And as we move ahead to the partnership, we are just continually grateful for the city in funding those SRO positions for us. They'd have a lot of impact, as you've seen and we discussed here historically. The coordinating and sharing information goes both ways. It's very important that we have that resource available. We mentioned about the attendance and every 15 minutes. And one of the strengths that we're working on, as we mentioned right now, is this active shooter and training. Can't overemphasize the confidence that that brings to our campuses when we know that there are SROs and the city is there and they know they have our backs. And then we, anything we can do to keep fully funding, we know budgets are tight. And we want to thank the city for continuing to fund our SROs and hope that will continue in the next budget cycle. And with that, we'll turn it to boards in the council for questions.
Do you want us, go ahead, why don't you go first?
Thank you for the presentation. I'll just look to my colleagues and for any questions. Director Shephard.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. And Lieutenant, thank you so much for this partnership. I had a question about the type of training that the officers, the SROs receive, not so much around the drug awareness or the gang intervention. We've had presentations on that, but this is around mental health, behavioral health. We're all familiar with the viral video of SRO Chris Morrison. And it was amazing, whatever type of training that she received should be commended. But I'm wondering, you know, the way that she handled it, and I know that the SROs have received some type of training, but it was, it was just spot on. So I'm wondering what they, what type of training they received.
Yeah, with Chris, that's really her personality and just her experiences, you know, as a police officer, as a teacher. The, the training that the officers receive is crisis intervention training. It's a week-long training program. I am sending two officers to a behavior assessment training program in Santa Clara next month, actually. The part of it is picking the SROs. It's really getting the right personalities and the right people in those positions. Other than that, they don't receive any other behavior type training, mental health training, other than, other than the critical incident or the crisis intervention training, I believe. Can you think of anything else?
I can't off the top of my head.
Good afternoon. Renner Navarro, Chief of Police. The other things that we do is we do annual training for all of our officers and the school resource officers are a part of that. But we are constantly addressing soft skills or how to, how to speak with people on an ongoing basis. So that, we include that in our officer, officer training on an annual basis. And then we, the school resource officers, they attend a school resource officer school. And again, all of our officers, in fact, I'm in it right now, the crisis intervention training. We send every single officer dispatcher and field personnel to that training. So it's, it's an ongoing training that we do. We do it as much as we can.
And again, it's getting the right personalities in there. You're welcome.
Other questions from the board?
Director McFarren. Thank you for the presentation. Regarding the every 15 minutes, are you guys still on the cycle where it's like you do one school a year? Because it's such a huge production.
Yes.
Has there ever been a thought of doing it at the middle school level? Or is it just so intense that we keep it at maturity level wise at the high school level?
That's correct, yes. I think with everything, the seriousness of everything involved in the program, it's probably more age appropriate for the older teens.
Well, I have to say that there was an every 15 minutes event at Piner in the late 90s when I was teaching there. And it's the only one I've been a part of. And it had a huge impact on me. It had a huge impact on several of my students. And I have to tell you that that program is fantastic. It is upsetting. It is hard to watch. But I think the realistic nature of it and connecting personally to the students is why it makes an impact. And so I just, anything we can do to keep encouraging that program, it needs to keep going. It's so good.
And I think, I think one of the things we're rotating around in a four-year cycle is so we try to make sure that every student during their high school career has participated. And that's kind of the cycle that we're doing. So you get it within four years. So that emotional impact will be there by your senior year when driving starts happening. And maybe that's how it's related to why it's not at middle schools as much.
And I know it's connected mainly to drugs and alcohol and driving. Is texting a part of that as well? Because it seems like that's almost as bad or worse than drugs and alcohol at this point.
That's a good point. I don't believe that that is part of it from what I recall. It is the focus on the alcohol and drug aspect of it. But, and I agree with you, it is extremely impactful. And I was only there for parts of it as the supervisor and checking in. And I know Chief Navarro gave a speech, a talk at the, the last day. And just people just literally emotional about it, even though it was, you know, not a real thing. But they feel that it was very, very real.
Thank you for highlighting that.
Yeah, of course.
Director Fong had a comment, and then Director Mani, any questions? Yeah, questions, comments, this discussion item.
So Chief Navarro and Mayor Schwedhelm and Mr. Olivares, because you've been in police work for so long, and I've been in this since the inception of the school resource officer in my role before this role. It has made a difference. And it's made a difference because of the relationships that the police have made with the kids. And the kids are now seeing an officer in uniform, they're mostly in uniforms, sometimes he came in khakis. But those relationships made a difference. They just made a difference. Because I've been in another school district where we didn't have that, and the difference was palpable. The kind of attitude that the officers come in with versus the kind of attitude that our officers are coming in with, with our kids, makes all the difference. So you're really impacting lives. And I want to thank you, thank the city, thank the police department for all the work that you've done in the past, also for this program, because it is vital. And I love this partnership.
Director Mani.
I also want to share my appreciation for this program and with the, you know, the budget cuts with the county and how we don't really have access to keep anymore. I completely agree with Assistant Superintendent Mizera that this is vital to our, our students and our district. And so I think that moving forward, it's going to be really important that we focus on coordination of services to ensure that whatever resources are made available to students from the SRO's part, that the district also has some responsibility in making sure that they continue those services and that we just make sure that it's continual. So I want to ask what, what that coordination looks like now and if staff sees gaps or areas of improvement.
So I think that for us, we're kind of moving into another phase, anticipating that the CAPE program is, is where it is and county may not have the same kind of resources. So we're trying to build our own program. So, so we're shifting from a partnership where we didn't have the capacity before, four or five years ago when we started, we didn't have a mental health capacity. We've been using outside vendors to kind of help us build that support and the concept around. around it. So, now we are. Eric Loft, he has been hired as a mental health coordinator, so he is our person in that department that's kind of building the multi-tiered system under social, emotional, behavioral health. And then, we're providing our own services this year for elementary school sites. In the gap of Cape, we're hiring our own MFT to kind of be that ability to kind of resource immediately out and help. It's not a perfect solution, because that's not, since they're not a county employee, they don't have that, what's, I guess, termed in the industry, a backdoor, back into county services, but at least it's somebody that can support school sites, help counselors and administrators make those kind of decisions on a school site and kind of provide much of that same support.
And I just want to add on that. I think that in our community for a really long time, the responsibility to address mental health has fallen on the hands of nonprofits and private practitioners, and so I think going in that direction and making use of the resources that we have in our county, because there are quite a lot outside of the county system, is going to be really important. So, I'm glad that we have a mental health coordinator at the district.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the report and for your ongoing partnership and work together. It's really important for our students and our kids, who are kids just temporarily, so they're for your citizens. So, I think it's real important, and I really look for areas of collaboration that I think are real low-hanging fruit. And one of the things that I've been harping on every time I get somebody to talk about this is a program that they have in Washington DC, which is that they just have basically a media campaign where there are posters plastered everywhere and billboards that say that if you see a student out of school, that a police officer will take them to school, no penalty, and that that, it's a collaboration with the school district where there is no punishment for this. They will just take them to school and drop them off, and I think it's a perfect opportunity to build relationships between our students, our young citizens, their families, and our public safety officers. So, that's something that I would love to look into to see if there's data around the effectiveness of that. And then, the other thing, the question I had for you, Assistant Superintendent Mizera, is around, I know that we have really put more effort into, you know, chronic truancy, and your data shows that, and then, if we're, what are the results we're seeing, you know, from that effort?
We did have attendance up, excuse me, ADA was up last year. We're waiting for final CDE numbers. We've been waiting with bated breath to make sure that we give you accurate numbers, and we can never, unfortunately, match CDE numbers out of our own student information system, so we don't want to give you two separate levels of reports. But our department is going to come forward on the last year of the grant and the success we had. When we did our end-of-the-year reporting, we did show an increase in ADA and a reduction in chronic absenteeism throughout many different sites, but our final numbers, I wanted to come through the dashboard, because as you know, the dashboard now measures chronic absenteeism.
And that's consistent site to site, so it's...
Exactly, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Right, council, questions? Ms. Fleming?
Well, my first is a comment, which is just thank you to you, Assistant Superintendent, and to you, Lieutenant Cooker. I'm really impressed by your collaboration. I'm wondering if you have any personal anecdotes or experiences that you would like to share with us or anything that we didn't get through this? Seems like the amount of work that you're doing on behalf of all of our residents, whether they're adults or children in our system, is probably not encapsulated in nine slides, and I wanted to see if there's anything that you felt, after having heard the questions from the board, that you might like to add.
I'll start, and I said that I think the one thing is a great outcome is that our principals will want to see a black and white in front of the schools. That shows the community, the partnership, the strength, the confidence. So, I think that right there is just a great example of where we've come around. But just on a personal note, you know, every time we have a situation, a Facebook post where there's something potentially threatening, graffiti at a school site or something hit the paper, you know, to have the coordination of services, to go onsite with an SRO, have somebody meet me there with a principal, and just walk through the safety steps of what to do, did you do this? They just bring such a level of expertise and knowledge, and it really makes us feel that we're doing everything appropriate and right, and they're right there with us. And you just can't underestimate that confidence to walk into a situation and have somebody there. So, those are multiple anecdotes every year of when we have to go into a situation. They're right there, and that's great.
Yeah, I would agree with Steve, and, you know, it is just changing the culture too of the acceptance, I think, of having police officers on campus and working together. We have such a good relationship. I know Steve and I are in communication at least once or twice a week about issues that come up, and he knows that he can always get ahold of me, no matter what, and I'm going to pass that on to the SROs. I think now, just what's going on across our country with the active shooter incidents that are happening, unfortunately, more often than they should, it's great to have that part of the collaboration and educating our staff, our teachers, on what to do if that should happen on our campuses. And I think that part of the educational piece is becoming more accepted, especially for us here in Santa Rosa.
I would say that a demonstration or evidence of that was what happened at Santa Rosa High School, Ridgeway High School in the district office last spring, at the end of the school year during graduation. Our SRO Crosby was there, thank goodness. Ray was on the phone to me, like, within seconds, because they were going to do an incident command. That level of being able to move that quickly with three campuses, I think, is proof about not only the partnership, but the training we've received and what we understand, the relationship that the police force has developed with all of us. To the point where we're trying to collaborate on different needs that the police have at our sites, that I want to talk to our board about, that I think would be very helpful in the upcoming, you know, years. The most, the one that I really want us to think about, and I'll bring it up here, is the ability to paint numbers on the top of our roofs. I mean, it seems so simple when you think about it, but it'd be so helpful for law enforcement to know from the top exactly which building is which based on a number in maps. So, that's the level at which we are collaborating, and I think it's very healthy for our community to do so.
Thank you. I just want to encourage you, from both the city and the school board, to keep letting us know how we can support the collaboration that you have.
Great, other questions? Ms. Oliveras?
Thank you, Mayor. There's a number of items I'd like us to hopefully follow up on, but as to President Close's comments about truancy, for example, I think there's even more that we can do, even with our business committee, for example, how we do the outreach. It kind of takes me back to the start of our violence prevention partnership and how we looked at gangs a long time ago, and we decided that gang violence was not just an issue related to police, that it involved the entire community. And I've learned to see education the same way now. We cannot leave it just to our educators and teachers to educate and keep our kids safe. We all have ownership in it as a community, and that goes to the truancy. How do we, as community members, business community, help and support the efforts to keep our kids in school where they can be in a safe learning environment? And I think there's ways of doing that through some types of campaigns. Often, we see youth out in the community, but do we ever actually ask, hey, aren't you supposed to be in school? You know, that kind of a question to them, not threatening, but just asking a question, you know, just to remind them. I'd also like to see a way of getting our students more involved in local government, more civic engagement, to the extent that we can. And I'm thinking that we might be able to start that by engaging our ASB officers, and suggesting maybe exploring, how do we pull together a summit of all of the ASB officers to meet with council staff or others and plan some kind of a day for them on what that means to be engaged? I would love to use them, for example, as focus groups on some of the things that we want to do to improve school safety and the school environment. As we all know, we're now into, I think, two years of legalized adult use of marijuana. And I don't know what's going on out there, really, we hear about it, but to what extent has have things changed in Santa Rosa? But I think that when we start engaging in perhaps surveys of our school, of our students or focus groups, that we engage the student body on how do we do that, right? And engage them in this process. We're talking about them, but we should include them in helping us come up with some ideas and decisions on how to approach it, to get a sense for what are the issues related to that, vaping, mental health issues, mental health needs on campus, but to just give them a stronger voice, and I think that would be something that would be, I believe, would be well-received. And we also need to look at our student community as our potential future employees as well. And maybe it's for us as a city to explore some kind of a formal or informal mentorship program for students, because, you know, we have a vast number of employees with different backgrounds, different jobs, but to start exposing some of those students to some of the jobs, and again, just to provide them the support that they may need moving along through school as well. And I think that is it, but I, it's been great for me to see this transformation, because I see a very, a lot of openness now, a lot of transparency with both of us. And I think a big part of that has been the engagement of the partnership going back to the early 2000s and how we've evolved. And I remember going back even way beyond that, when you're, we're talking about the acceptance of school resource officers on campus and how difficult that was. And now, try to remove one from the campus, and good luck with that, right? So, I'd love to see this partnership continue to develop. I think the last time we had a meeting like this, it was almost 10 years ago, I think I was mayor the last time we had one, but it wasn't at this level of discussion with talking about ideas and how we can work together for the sake of our students and their parents as well. So, thank you.
Any other...
Superintendent.
Keneate Macyus. Thank you for that. It did remind me of the fact that Santa Rosa City Schools has what we call youth design crews. We are actually designing for equity, many, many things, programs, getting feedback from students, and I think it would be wonderful for our youth design crews to come and speak to the city council. I would define our youth design crews as students who are on the margin. So, our first crew is from Ridgeway High School, because who better to describe what the needs are for a school district and for programs? Are those students who were not served by that. So, I can't wait, it's coming, you'll see that. And then, about the community, I think that's great. There's a statistic we have in here, that's why there's little teeth on the vital signs for truancy. I didn't know if anybody would get that, nobody obviously did. Because 20% of children aged 5 through 11 have one tooth that is in decay, which prevents them from coming to school. So, if we think about something as basic as what we probably take for granted is tooth health, dental health, what can we do as a community, what can you do as a community to encourage businesses, dentists? I know we have some, but it feels like it needs to be an overall screening for every five-year-old who comes into school. And then, not only a screening, but then, what are we doing to take care of the dental health? If they're missing potentially like 17 million days or something, there was a huge number in here, it's something that we could actually take care of. So, I think that's an idea that you're pointing to.
Thank you.
I also want to thank you for the presentation. It is funny, you mentioned Steve, I remember back when it was not a welcome sight to see a police car at a campus, and now they are part of the community. I think that's that sweet spot we're looking for. And again, thinking back to those times when we did have truancy officers, I know Santa Rosa City Schools had, what was his name, Ernesto, Willie, Will? It was before that, it was before that, because he would read that education code just before he found the truant kid, and we'd take him to Santa Rosa High School. But it was interesting, back then, they, you know, if a child was, everyone had to be in school between like 10 and 2 o'clock. But now, with homeschooling and all the different programs, how do you manage that? So, not only for our police officers, how would members of the community, outside of what Mr. Oliveras said, hey, shouldn't you be in school? What would you recommend to our community? How would you deal with someone who you think might be a truant school, or a truant student out in the community?
We might, as an example, so we have students that go to the junior college all the time, and they show a junior college ID. Sometimes, when I was at Piner High School, you know, you'd have to have a copy of their schedule, and they'd show a little something, they had a card, a sticker that says JC, so they're coming for in and out. We could do something similar at every school. Pivot Online School could have a card that shows Pivot Online, so they're enrolled in a school, but the school doesn't require the same kind of attendance. I think those kind of things can be worked out very easily, like, and the businesses show me your card, I'm not going to serve you. Those are the kind of partnerships we're talking about.
Great, thanks for the information. Any additional, Mr. Tivitz?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually do have a question for you, Madam Superintendent, after what you just said about tooth decay. I assume you were working with the Pediatric Dental Initiative. How's that going? Is it a capacity issue for them?
I think it is a capacity issue, or it might be an ask issue. I know that some of our schools are served, I'm not, I'm not sure that all schools are served. It's something that Assistant Superintendent and I said we need to take a look and see what schools are being served, what schools are not being served, for those initial screenings and then follow-up screenings. I think if we ask, I really feel like the dental community will come forward and help. So, I think it's just a matter of ask. It wasn't until we were researching for this, to prepare for this, that I saw the statistics about dental health and went, okay, yeah, we can do something here.
That's an interesting one, because I used to serve on their board for many years, and we were always looking for opportunities to increase the number of kids that we saw. And I don't recall once in that boardroom talking about a partnership with...
School district.
The district. So, I think that, I hope that there's a conversation in your future there. I will reach out to the executive director on my end.
Oh, perfect.
And hopefully, because that, to me, is something that is completely avoidable, and I hope that you can get those numbers down.
I was surprised at the number. I mean, I was surprised at the number, so.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Director Sheffield has...
Just to add to that, Superintendent, I think you're right with the capacity level, and maybe it's a matter of going for the ask, but when, when the dentist volunteered to do the screenings, I had a conversation with our family dentist, and she shared with me, you know, by the time that we see these students, we see these kids, and we can see months and months of neglect, oral hygiene neglect, and it could have been prevented. It could have been in some instances a year, so by the time that they do get a referral, oftentimes to CPI, it's wow, the damage has already been done. How many days of school has that kid actually missed and didn't know? The parents didn't know, the kid is just home with a fever, did not connect it, correlate it to oral health, but it's there. And the numbers, the statistics that you saw are very real, and those are the numbers that are coming in from the dentists who finally get these referrals when it, you know, months or sometimes, you know, a year or two late. Yeah, so...
Great, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you for that presentation. Mr. McGlynn, are you going to handle 4.1?
Yes, sir. 4.1. Report, amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the City of Santa Rosa and the Santa Rosa City Schools to allow alternatives to construction of affordable housing or school facilities on Fir Ridge Drive, Lot F, APN 173-620-030. David Guin, Assistant City Manager, leading us off.
All right, great, thank you, and good afternoon, President Close, and members of the board, and Mayor Schwedhelm and members of the council. Assistant Superintendent Edson and I are here to present this item, and there is an updated, it looks like the PowerPoint that's on the, apologize, the PowerPoint that's on the, on your, online is the correct one, so the title is wrong on Mr. Edson's here, but, that's correct? Okay, I'm sorry, I forgot the wrong one. But I think we're going to go through this presentation and make sure that, if you have any questions on this, we will, Mr. Edson and I are going to be here. But before we start off, I did want to acknowledge that a number of people got together over the past couple of months, or actually, I think it must have been a year, to address this issue, and I want to acknowledge staff that worked closely together, the district staff and city staff, some are in the audience here, Ashley Crocker from the city's attorney's office, obviously a city attorney, Sue Gallagher, Gabe Osborne, Megan Bassinger, Serena Lino, Deputy Superintendent Edson, and James Traver were also a big help in making this happen. So, this did take a lot of people to pull this together, so we are happy that we're at this point to bring forward this proposed amendment to this MOU. So, what we are here to talk about is an amendment to the memorandum of understanding for the Fir Ridge site. We'll talk about where that property is and where that's located, and more specifics about that site in a minute. But a little bit of background on this, this goes back quite a few, number of years, back to 1988, when development happened in the Fountain Grove area that gave this piece of property to the city, or the decision between the city and the subdivision. A number of deadlines were put in place back then to do something with that property, particularly specifically to build a school or build low and moderate income housing for school district employees. Those... Those deadlines, as you can see from this slide, or this is just a few of those, there were negotiation deadlines, there were development deadlines, construction deadlines, and all those things had to do with how to get this property activated and used by the, by the district. This agreement, this MOU, was amended 12 times between 1988 and 2015. There's a lot of changes over the years that kept getting extended and moved. There were two notable changes that happened, and one in 2003, that allowed the district to use the site for, to develop affordable housing on that site. And the 12th amendment, which was in 2016, extended that agreement additional three years to give additional time to see something happen on that site. The other thing it did is it allowed the city manager at that time to extend the agreement if progress was being made. So if a development, development plan was in place and things started to move forward, we wanted to make sure that we could extend this agreement to make sure that that development did happen. And the other thing that we did in 2016 was formally memorialize a partnership between the city and the district to make sure that we were both in this together, and we were going to work together to find a solution for this site. So the site that we're talking about is up in Fountain Grove, it's in the northeast part of Santa Rosa, specifically on Fir Ridge Drive. It is a six acre, about a six-acre parcel up on Fir Ridge Drive, and just north of this parcel, there's a park, Fir Ridge Park. Both those parcels were part of the agreement between the developer and the city when this was originally developed. So where we are today, we do have an MOU in place. We went to the city council on October 1st, I think about two weeks ago, and presented some options for the city council to amend the MOU with the district. We got feedback from the city council, and what we're here today is presenting that revised MOU based on the feedback we receive from the city council. And the two primary elements that, the feedback that we got, that we incorporated in the amendment that's before you, is to extend the term, extend the term by three years, and then to give the district as much flexibility as possible so that we could provide a housing solution for district employees. And that could look like a number of different, different things. So the way that it's written provides development on that site as the original agreement, so by extending the agreement, that inherently comes with extending the MOU. So the thought is that the district could do that, or, or the district could sell the site and use those proceeds for a number of things. One is to invest in a housing project off-site on a different location, or build on a different site. The second option that was talked about was the district developing a revolving fund loan for a down payment assistance program for district employees. So real quickly to go over what those options are in detail, essentially, the first option, like I said, is really extending that MOU, allowing the district more time to develop on that site, if that's what the district would like to do. There are some key milestones that would have to be accomplished, those are already embedded in the MOU, those are already established in terms of what that looks like. That's the first thing, that's, that's in the MOU. The second is a two-parter. The first is if the district were to sell the property, that they could use those proceeds for partnership. So the concept there is that if a developer is already developing housing on another location that the district wants to partner with to try to realize those units in a much expedited fashion, that's an option, or potentially partner with the developer to build an additional housing specifically just for district employees. The, the part, part two of this, of selling the property, would be to use the proceeds to develop this loan, a loan program. And the council gave direction, and the way this is written is to provide flexibility for the district to create what that loan program looks like. So the intent is that the district would develop a program that would make sense for the district employees, to make sure that they're addressing the needs of the district, and identify a way to implement that program, manage that program, and make sure that program's successful. So that is the way that it's currently written at this point. So that, that's the flexibility that was put into this MOU. The MOU is before you, we've also included the old MOU as well, so you can see what the original looked like, what the new proposal is. But the intent between the district and the city is to provide some flexibility for staff to work through this, to figure out how to utilize this site, get this site moving, and hopefully see a benefit to, to the district. So with that, we have two resolutions, I'm sorry, one resolution and one motion. It'd take two actions if the council and the board would like to move this forward. The council would move a resolution for, to sign this MOU, no, extend the MOU, and the school board would, would vote on a motion to approve the MOU. So it's two different actions. So with that, I would be happy to answer questions, and Rick is with me as well.
You want to go first with questions?
Do we have questions from the board? Questions?
And council, any questions? Ms. Fleming?
I have a question that is directed toward the school board, which is, we're extending it for a term of three years, correct? That's for you, Mr. Edson. Is three years acceptable length of time for you to be able to do what we've outlined here?
Excuse me. Good afternoon, council and board. We do believe it is, we would be in the position to then take this back to our board for their determination on this, and set the process in motion to turn this land into a valuable asset for our district. We've been trying to do that through many iterations over the course of the last two to four years, where it wasn't feasible to do it as the agreement stood. So we think this is a real opportunity to do something for our school district and specifically our employees.
Okay, so my question is, is do you believe that the property will be at some point in the process in three years' time, or do you believe that you need longer? I'm trying to get clarity on is three years, because we've been amending this since 1988, and I'm hopeful that it can be put to good use for your employees ASAP.
We believe that three years would be long enough, but we would certainly be open to a longer period of time to ensure that there is a success.
So I need you to be clear with me if you would like longer, so then I can turn to my council and tell them for that.
Three years is fine. We will get the property taken care of.
Understood, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Okay, Madam City Attorney, do we go first? City Council?
Yes.
Okay, so entertain a motion by council member?
Yes, I'll move a resolution of the council, City of Santa Rosa, approving a First Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Santa Rosa and the Center of the City School, School District, to allow alternatives to construction of affordable housing or school facilities on Fir Ridge Drive, Lot F, APN 173-620-030. And wait for the read of the text.
Second. Anyway, second, we are going to go old-school with roll-call voting. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, we'll begin with Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Olivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Tibbetts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rogers?
Aye.
Mayor Schwedhelm?
Yes.
That passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, so we'll kind of take over at this point, and so it will be a three-action item on our agenda to adopt the resolution of the MOU on our end. And I just want to, before I call for, first, are there any questions? We asked for questions before, but I think there are none. You know, before I call for a motion, I just want to thank everybody that's been involved in this process. This has been going on since 1988, it's a really long time, and, but it was determined a few years ago that there just isn't a feasible building site for us, and so we appreciate the city working with us to turn this into an asset for our district and for our staff, and most particularly in the last six months, the discussions around allowing us to, if we choose, turn this into a down payment assistance fund for our staff. And we did a survey of our staff members and said, what would be most helpful for you in the housing space? And 67% of them said down payment assistance. And so this really, truly, for our staff or our district, could be a game changer. And so we appreciate the staff's effort on this, and really thank the council for weighing in on the MOU and the, and the terms that give us the most flexibility to make that the most helpful asset for our staff members. So I just want to thank everybody involved in this process, because this is, it seems very nuts and bolts and dry and boring, but this is actually a really big deal, and, and can be a real asset to our staff members. So thank you. And with that, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the First Amendment to the MOU between the City of Santa Rosa and Santa Rosa City Schools to allow an alternative to the construction of affordable housing or school facilities on Fir Ridge Drive, Lot F, APN 173-620-030.
I'll second.
My move by Director McCormick, second by Director Sheffield, roll-call vote, please, Lori.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
And President Close?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
I feel like we should applaud. Thank you for that presentation and all the work that was done. So before we adjourn, I would just ask all council, if there are some other specific items you would like us to address at our next meeting, so then I will get with the board president and come up with an agenda, a meeting with staff, but please send any of those topics to me, and I'm sure the board president would like the same. So with that, we'll adjourn the meeting.